First of May, wow, where'd the month go? The first of May County Commission meeting here at Lewis and Clark County. We will start off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before I do that, I better introduce everybody. I am Candace Payne, Chair of this auspicious meeting. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Chair Payne.
To his immediate left is Brandy Spangler, who keeps us on track and in time. And to her immediate left is Greg McNally, who's the Director of our Planning Department. You haven't been here for a while, Greg, so I missed you. To my immediate right is the very honorable Commissioner Andy Hunthausen, who I forgot to introduce on Tuesday. And to his immediate right is Nico Hesch from the County Attorney's Office. To his immediate right is his right-hand man, Keegan Shea, also from the County Attorney's Office. And to his immediate right is Roger Balls, who is the Chief Administrative C.A.O., yeah, Officer for the County of Lewis and Clark. So this is our team. We have a sign-in sheet right in the front on that little table right there. So if you're here, it would be good to come in and sign into the signup sheet. And I think there's copies of the agenda up there if you should feel the need. And we can now, oh, we have a very special presentation today. This is the Lewis and Clark County Proclamation that 2025, that May of 2025 is Historic Preservation Month. And I had originally arranged for, I believe Kathy Masefield. There you are. Okay. We'll be here to do the presentation. Greg, oh, you did put it up there. It's right there on the podium. If you would come up, you get to read the proclamation, and then we'll take a picture or two and move on to other things. But this is the best part.
It's read.
Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those kind words. And actually, Chris Avril, who is the HTC Chairperson, is here, and he could read that if that's okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
That's, I, I, sorry, I didn't recognize him.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I didn't let anybody know that he was coming.
Madam Chair, member of the Commission, Chris Avril.
Be sure to sign in so we get your name spelled right.
Absolutely. Thank you for this proclamation. It's a very important signal that, excuse me, this Commission and this county recognizes the importance of historic preservation. And so, whereas the United States of America is entering the 250th anniversary of the founding of the greatest experiment in personal freedom in all of human history, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas preservation work strengthens communities, breathes new life into neighborhoods, and builds a more connected society, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities throughout Montana and across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas historic places we preserve and protect spark joy, inspire wonder, and connect us to our shared history in ways that shape our future, whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas "celebrate the power of place" is the theme for National Historic Preservation Month 2025, now therefore we proclaim May 2025 as National Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Helena and Lewis and Clark County to join their fellow citizens across Montana and the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance dated this first day of May 2025, Lewis and Clark County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicely done.
So if I could add a few words about, thank you, about what the Heritage Tourism Council, the HTC, is doing. Starting this month, they will be sending out an online survey about 35 things, historic things, they would hate to see Lewis and Clark County without. And that includes the city of Helena, includes Marysville, all those other locations throughout the county. And so that'll be released sometime this month, and people will have time to respond to that. The idea for this is that it will help us with the, identify things that are important to people in the county that could then relate to creating a historic preservation plan in the future, and also might relate to the growth policy that the county is currently working on, and the city's growth policy too, because it's a city-county board. The Heritage Tourism Council is also putting together a directory of historic preservation contractors, and so if they would like to be included in that director, that directory, they need to contact us in our office so that we can include them, looking for people who have experience with brickwork, or plaster, or roofing, wood finishes, windows, doors, whatever, and that might affect a historic building or historic structure. They also are taking nominations for their annual historic preservation awards that will be submitted, that will be recognized this fall, probably in September. So those are the things that we've got going on. The HTC meets on the third Tuesday of the month, and this month, they're going to Marysville for that meeting. They're trying to get around to the other communities on a somewhat regular basis. The first community they went to was Lincoln and had a very good visit there. Now they're going to Marysville. They want to get to Augusta, York, Rimini, to all of the outlying areas too. So anyway, just wanted to let you know, things that are going on with the Heritage Tourism Council. They're a real active, fun group.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the Commissioners? Andy? Tom?
Just thank you for your good work. Really appreciate it. And please carry on and do, and preserve some of these important historic buildings and structures and places around our county.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Chair Payne?
Yeah. Andy?
Don't want to repeat all of that, but Ditto, I guess, from one perspective, really appreciate the work we do and the importance of historic preservation of our community. I was going to ask, though, maybe just speak to the local Lewis and Clark Historical Society as well, which is a related group.
Sure.
And folks can participate that way and be members of that group if they choose. I'm a member, and it's a good thing. Get a lot of good information.
Sure. Sure. The Lewis and Clark County Historical Society is separate from local government. It is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). They now have a museum space in the Steamboat Block on the Helena Avenue side. They're open on Saturdays from 10 till 3:00. And on May, the second Tuesday, I think it's May 9th, the second, that might not be right, but the second Tuesday of the month of May is their annual meeting, and John Schatz is going to talk about the Manitoba Railroad. So coming to Helena. So don't know if many people have heard of the Manitoba. It's going to be an enlightening talk, and I think it's at 6:30, so, at the museum. So everybody's invited to that.
Go back and, would you tell me again where this, it's in the Steamboat Block?
In the Steamboat Block, 618 Helena Avenue.
I had no idea it was there, so I'm really glad, I appreciate you providing that information.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you. With that, I think we should all give a little ovation here, and then we will do a photograph and move on. So congratulations. All of you. Yes, be sure and sign the sign-in sheet. Moving right along, the Consent Action Items is the next item on our agenda. The Consent Action Items will be presented by Mr. Roger Balls. Take it over, Roger.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. We do not have any consent action items today.
Okay. It was a test, just to, okay. Action items. Agenda item 4A, Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and the National Association of Pretrial Services Agencies. This will be presented by our friend Kelly McBride.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. So yes, I'm Kelly McBride. I am the Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. And before you today is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and the National Association of Pretrial Service Agencies, also known as NAPSA. At their July 2023 Strategic Planning Meeting, the members of the Lewis and Clark County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or CJCC, selected national accreditation of the county's pretrial program as their top priority. They have nine wide-ranging priorities. Their top priority was accreditation. Pretrial programs are accredited through NAPSA. NAPSA's Commission on Accreditation provides pretrial agencies with the opportunity to ensure pretrial release standards are being implemented to their fullest extent. Benefits of accreditation include improved staff training and development, assessment of strengths or weaknesses, defenses against outside interests, establishment of measurable criteria for upgrading operations, and performance-based benefits. At the request of the CJCC's Citizens Advisory Committee, or CAC, so many letters, they all start with C. So in March of this year, the county requested, at the CAC's request, the county requested professional onsite expertise and technical assistance from NAPSA. NAPSA has agreed to send pretrial, there's a caveat, this says two, they're actually sending one, but NAPSA, and that happened yesterday. So NAPSA has agreed to send one pretrial expert, Aaron Johnson, to Lewis and Clark County, to provide his expertise, shadow our pretrial officers, meet with members of the CJCC and CAC, and that also includes the CJCC's Jail Population Task Force, and provide an evidence-based community presentation on pretrial services as a form of bond. Total funds awarded in this contract are not to exceed $9,000, and they won't come close to that because it's only one professional coming now, but we have allocated the $9,000 if there were two. And the period of performance is May 7th through May 8th of 2025. So they will be here next week, he will be here next week. The request is that the Commission approve the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and NAPSA for onsite pretrial-specific technical assistance culminating in community, in a community presentation. Also, I have public comment from Jen Gersky, who could not be here, she's a member of the CAC, and Mafi Funk is here to provide, she's also a member of the CAC and is here to provide public comment. Any questions?
Any questions, Tom?
Chair Payne, I'm really excited about this work with, you know, learning, learning more about what's going on around the country. And could you give a little more information on the evening meeting that's set up coming next week?
Yes, so the evening meeting will be Thursday, May 8th, at the Doubletree Hotel. One of our CAC members is John Lidle, and John is the General Manager of the Doubletree. So he graciously gave us the use of their conference room space. So that would be Thursday, May 8th, 5:30 to 7:30. We will present to the community the great work we have been doing on our pretrial services program, providing some of the statistics, the analysis of where we're at, the success rate, how folks do when they're in our pretrial services program. And then Aaron Johnson, who is, so Aaron has multiple hats. He's the Director of Personal Bond and Collections for Galveston County. He's been there since 2019, and that's a fancy way of saying their pretrial services program. That's how it's referred to in Texas. He's also the President of the Texas Association of Pretrial Services, or TAPS, and he is the Chair of the NAPSA Education Committee. So quite, he's got over 20 years' experience with pretrial programs, not just in Texas, but in Kansas, in California. So he's got a good base of knowledge. I'm excited to have him come here and really share what he knows, best practices, and how we can start our process of becoming accredited.
And, excuse me, if I might, and that is, a meeting is open to the public, and then people are encouraged, right?
Perfect. You should be my spokesperson. So yes, the meeting's open to the public, it is free. We will be getting the word out in the newspaper, in Facebook, LinkedIn. My next thing I'll be talking to you about is our communications person who's here, and she's already on this and helping us get all of the communications out to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Andy, do you have anything?
I do. Chair Payne, just to, and sorry about being a little bit redundant, but the importance of accreditation, I just want to focus on that, and kind of this, all at our local experiment, that our taxpayers were, they helped us to start this back in 2017, 18, 17, 18?
Started the program in May of 2018.
18 is when we started, and it was via the rest, or the remodeling of the detention center and then adding this Department of Programs. And I think it's important that we talk about that history in that we've been trying to apply best practices, build a program all this time, and now this opportunity for accreditation just adds credibility from my perspective, and it, we will, as is going to happen on the 7th and 8th, we get somebody coming in saying, what are you doing, how are you doing it, are you using best practices as your program up to national standards, if you will, and is it worthy of accreditation? So I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit, the importance of this.
You stated it all very well. It really ensures that we hold ourselves to the highest standard we can hold ourselves to, which is what we want to do and what we've endeavored to do since we started this program. We started this program by looking at research, looking at evidence, looking at what works best. We found NAPSA really quickly and realized that they did have these standards. We designed our standard operating procedures, which were approved by the CJCC and the Commission in 2019. Those standard operating procedures are, follow the NAPSA standards. NAPSA has since revised their standards, they've changed a couple of things, so we do need to make some changes to our standard operating procedures. And again, we just want to make sure that we're doing things the right way. We have this, again, the support of, this all is because of the Citizens Advisory Committee. They, around 2015, started doing their research and realized we needed this. They're the ones who suggested, or I don't even think it was a suggestion, I think it was a mandate, that pretrial services be in that levy, and that we make sure that we do it correctly. But this accreditation will, again, we'll hold ourselves up to a higher standard, there'll be more opportunities for funding, and just knowing that we, as a county, are doing things correctly.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Kelly, I'm really happy that you are making this work. I think this is a very important part of our responsibility to the citizens of Lewis and Clark County. So thank you for all of your efforts. With that, any more questions? No. Is there any public comment on this matter?
Do you want Jen Gersky's first, or do you want to go first, Mafi?
This is the public comment, so.
So I'm, I'm gonna.
Oh, you're gonna read your.
Yes. Okay.
I really wanted public comment. Nobody ever stands up and does public comment. So I'm glad Mafi's here.
She's here. So this is from Jennifer Gersky to the Board of County Commissioners, dated May 1st, 2025. Dear Commissioners, as a citizen member of the Lewis and Clark County Citizens Advisory Committee, or CAC, I am writing in strong support of the upcoming visit and community presentation by Aaron Johnson, hosted by the Director of Pretrial Services. The public presentation, surety in the pretrial system, is scheduled for Thursday, May 8th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Doubletree Hotel in Helena. It is an opportunity to explore national best practices in pretrial services and strengthen the CAC's efforts to walk out our mission, which is to provide citizen input into the safety of the citizens of Lewis and Clark County and ensure the equitable and efficient treatment of defendants, offenders, and victims. Mr. Johnson is a nationally-recognized leader in his, in this field. He currently serves as President of the Texas Association of Pretrial Services and is Education Committee Chair for the National Association of Pretrial Service Agencies. With more than two decades of experience across multiple jurisdictions, Mr. Johnson's ability to present to us is an opportunity for the CAC to delve further into our mission and strengthen the systems that divert our citizens from long-term justice system involvement. The CAC has long supported Lewis and Clark County's pretrial program, from advocating for its creation to monitoring its success in reducing detention and improving court appearance rates. Our committee has prioritized smart justice solutions that increase efficiency, reduce unnecessary detention, and uphold public trust. I encourage the Commission to support this opportunity to strengthen our local system and reinforce our shared commitment to responsible, effective, and fair justice practices. And a copy of this has been submitted to Brandy. And now I'll get out of.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Mafi Funk, F-U-N-K, and I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Council, and I have to thank all of you for the time you've taken over the years to come to our meetings. You know, they're pretty interesting. It's particularly fun these days when Judge Abbott and Jen Gersky are both there. Get into lively conversations. I do hope both this contract and the one that's following, you would be able to approve. They really are important, those of you who, when you come to the meetings, you know that we all have a little bit of frustration, because one of our goals is to communicate with the, the community, with the public, and let them know that there's lots of good things happening. I know I did a lot of canvassing for the, for the levies. You know, we passed the bond so we could make the jail more habitable and useful and efficient and all those things. But then, what I would say to people, we built the plane, but we don't have any pilots on it. And that's what that did. And this program is, I think, one of the most important. But we need to communicate with the public, and that's why having, this is the first time we've been able, obviously, all the meetings are open to the public, but who, you know, people are busy. And this is an evening one, bringing in a national speaker, a national expert, to share with the community so that they can say, oh yeah, they are doing something, changes are being made, because it's very difficult when you're out on the street, seeing and not knowing, not seeing that there really have been some, some good changes, even with so many challenges. I'm particularly grateful that the funding for the pretrial services was put back in the budget. That took, that was a lot of, a lot of work, but well worth it, because it makes a big difference. It just is, it's the humane, smart thing to do. And so now that, and if we also can have a communicator, that we would be able to spend more time and do more to let the community know really what sorts of things are going on in our criminal justice. Everything, the criminal justice service. So I hope you can support both of these, but particularly to have this gentleman come who will be, really bring information to the community that will be useful. And again, thank you so much for all your input into our, our monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Well, how about a motion, gentlemen?
Chair Payne, it is, I'm pleased to make the motion to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and the National Association of Pretrial Service Agencies, as is explained by Ms. McBride and, and Ms. Funk, and it's.
Second.
Right. And if I might just comment, I just, I think.
Just a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any comments from the Commission there?
There.
Got to follow my perspective.
I just, I'm excited about what's going on and the opportunity to have this national expert in there, helping us to, to stay on track and be the most effective that we can be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comment? Andy? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and the National Association of Pretrial Services Agencies as presented by Kelly Goodwin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign. The motion passed three to nothing. Action item 4B, Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications LLC. And Kelly McBride is again leading us through this.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Again, Kelly Goodwin McBride, I'm the Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. And before you is a professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications for marketing and communication services. At their July 2023 Strategic Planning Meeting, the members of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or CJCC, selected improved communications with the public as one of their top priorities. You already heard what the number one was, but one of their top three was improved communications with the public. Additionally, the CJCC's Citizens Advisory Committee, or CAC, selected communications as one of their top priorities. At the request of the CAC, in October of 2024, the county entered into a six-month professional services contract with Madav Communications LLC for professional marketing services. The professional services contract before you engages the services of Madav Communication for the next 12 months, through April 30th of 2026, to continue to implement and improve upon the communication plans, public relations, copywriting, content creation, communication strategy, graphic design, and social media, with the goal of increasing public awareness of the voter-mandated programs and work developed and implemented by the Department of Criminal Justice Services under the direction of the CJCC and the CAC. Total funds awarded in this contract are $24,000, and the period of performance is upon Commission approval through April 30th of 2026. The. The request is that the Commission please approve the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications LLC for continued marketing and communication services. And in the audience today is Ally Mandell, who is the founder and president of Madav Communications.
Thank you, Kelly. I think I'll wait and ask her to speak. No, Ally, you better come up and give your part. You're not exactly the public, you're part of the contract, so, right?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Payne and fellow Commissioners. Yeah, this has been a pleasure, a great account.
You'll have to say your full name.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so my full name is Alexandra Mandell. I go by Ally Mandell. I am the founder and director of Madav Communications. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with Kelly and her team at the Criminal Justice Services Division. This is a team that is incredibly passionate about those that they serve in the community, and they are very well versed on what they need to do there. We have talked extensively about our goals for communications, and the first six-month contract, we have done all that we can to create the brand, the visual brand that you probably see on the letterhead or the masthead template there. We have created all the procedures and protocols and things that you need to get in place in order to have good communications moving forward. And so this, this next part of our contract will really be a bigger endeavor in our community to get that message framework consistent amongst the entire team and into the community of Helena and beyond, to talk about the good things that they're doing. Very excited for the event coming up because that will be a great opportunity to showcase the good, excellent work that they're doing, as well as the results that they have in place, the measurable results. So that is also something that we're doing from a communication standpoint, is creating those measurable goals so that we have something to meet and exceed. So it's been a really fun process, from the graphic design, the marketing, the messaging framework, and the press. So thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for your comments. Does anyone on the Commission have questions for either Kelly or Ally?
No.
Then I get to make sure, is there any public comment out there related to this matter? Seeing none, and this is speak now or forever hold your peace. We don't allow any raggle-taggle stuff coming in later. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications LLC as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications. Is there any further discussion or comment from the Commission?
Chair Payne?
Andy?
If I could, yes. Just a comment about this as one piece of the puzzle. Again, looking back, we started this, we have 15 years, it was a 15-year vote, if you will, by the taxpayers to fund this. And we really need to tell our story, we need to help the community understand how these services are impacting our community, impacting the local criminal justice system in a positive way. And if we can do that in a systematic and logical way, which is being described here from my perspective, the better opportunity we have to not only educate our community, but then when it's time to ask the community if they'd like to continue these programs, we really have some substance that we can show folks statistically and through our telling of these, of our story, I guess, if you will. And that'll give us an opportunity to keep the programs going into the future, hopefully. Or if it's not the right direction, then we'll know that, too. But I believe we are on the right track. So I'm happy to support and just wanted to talk about this as being part of that bigger picture that we're trying to accomplish through, through this whole program and system. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Tom? Any comment?
No, nothing more.
I feel like this is a very important part of this whole program. There are many people who live in Lewis and Clark County, and I was one until I became a county commissioner. I had no idea that we provided not only this service, but there's so many other things that our community provides to help make us a community. The people we impact, you look back and think, well, jail services, that's not going to impact me. I have children and grandchildren, and they may be impacted, or I may be personally. And I never really thought about it before. So this, this communication thing is so important, that we have these services. People are going to use them. It's a terrible time. People and families go through this, it's nice if they have some support and some ideas as what, what we can do to help them. So thank you for this work, and I am fully supportive of this and hope we can continue down this pathway. At this point, let's see, it has been moved and seconded, right? Okay, moved and seconded that we approve this contract between Lewis and Clark County and Madav Communications LLC. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes three to nothing. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners.
We have now come to the point in this meeting where we ask for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.